All right, Pastor Hammond, it's all yours.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we call upon you tonight as we gather to discuss the business of our city in the seat of our local government. We ask for your guidance in the matters to be decided upon today that our elected officials will have the wisdom to know what is right, the courage to do what is right, and the strength to stand upon what is right in your sight and in the sight of the people of Los Panos. We pray your blessing upon our mayor and council members and their families. We speak life, health, prosperity, peace, and unity over our city and its citizens. We ask you to draw us together and remove the elements in our city that tear us apart and threaten the well-being of our city and its people. You command us in your word to love one another just as you have loved us and that the world will know us by our love. Give us the strength to overcome evil and hatred with your love. May we strive to live at peace with one another instead of causing strife and division. We look to you for guidance, strength, and wisdom tonight. Bless these proceedings and shine your light on the truth for everyone to see, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You can remain standing. It's 6:01. I'll call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge from Acting Police Chief Rana.
In this city of America, a democracy is based on the American and two republics, which stands by nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. If we could start with a roll call? Here. And we have a quorum. Item four, consideration of approval of agenda. I'm going to start this with making the motion to strike item nine from the agenda. And then, Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd also like to make a request to remove item number 11A and B. I request that our legal counsel, Mr. Vaughn, seek an independent legal opinion on the validity of the 5-0 vote as currently proposed in the city manager's contract on the agenda, which is in opposition of the city's current ordinance, number 1110, section 2-3.126, which states the removal and temporary suspension of the city manager shall only be upon an affirmative vote of three or more members of the city council in a regular or special call meeting after the sole, at the sole discretion of the city council with or without cause and without right of appeal. This ordinance was passed on June 19, 2013, by unanimous vote of council members Fariah, Louis, Silveira, Stone Grove, and Mayor Volalta. I'd also like to request, again, the removal of item 11A and B to be placed on a future agenda after the legal opinion of the 5-0 vote as stated in the city manager's contract on today's agenda, and that it be placed on the agenda as a public hearing, giving the members of the public the opportunity to redress their opinions.
So question, what does 11A have to do with the 5-0 vote?
Well, it's a one agenda item of 11A and B.
11A has nothing to do with the 5-0 vote. I'm just curious, the validity of 11A? 11A is a settlement.
Well, until we determine, in my opinion, about the vote, the whole agenda item needs to be brought back to the council.
So you just asked for 11 in general?
11, yes. But it's addressed on the agenda as 11A and B.
Okay, so we do a vote on them individually?
So I would consider Mrs. Lewis's motion to be an amendment to your motion. So you would need to deal with her motion first as to whether you're going to remove item 11, and then it would go back to your motion to accept the agenda minus item nine. So it's kind of a two-step process as to whether or not her amendment would go forward.
Okay, so vote on hers first?
Okay.
And do a...
So I'll set that as a motion.
Okay. Motion to amend the mayor's motion to accept the agenda less item nine, and then amended by Mrs. Lewis. So you would vote on the amendment first. Depending on the outcome of that, you would vote on your item.
Okay. All right, so she, so Councilmember Lewis is making a motion to remove item 11, which includes 11A and B. So that's how I understand it?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So she's making a motion. Do I have a second? All right, so hearing none, that motion fails, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So moving on to my motion of removing item nine, which is the consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution 6609, the amending Division Four, the salary schedule, to be continued to March 1st. I'll make that motion if anyone wants to make a second. Councilmember Jones?
Mayor, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Moving on to, I've got to turn off some microphones here. Moving on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber information table at this time. Like to invite the public to come forward and speak. And please, just a reminder to silence or turn off your phones while people are speaking. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Panos. I have a few questions and points to make. I know you can't respond, but you know the answers and should help you to think before you cast your votes on one of the items. What's wrong with it? Oh my God, no one's ever told me that. Cool. What I'm seeing in hearing is 1.8 million, a raise, a guaranteed job. Is this what our attorney recommends? Or is our attorney just doing what the council has asked him to do? Is our EPLI insurance paying for this? Or is it coming out of the general fund? And if our EPLI insurance is not paying for it, what was the reason why? Let me list some of the items that come out of our general fund. Our police, our fire departments, our parks, our staff. Majority of what goes on in this city comes out of our general fund. We have been compounding a decision made and still getting a city manager for four years. And isn't that why we hired him? Because we didn't want someone that would only be here temporarily and move on. This notice, or threat, whatever you want to call it, should be sent to an arbitration and not decided by this council. I know we lost, you had mentioned, Mr. Jones did, that we have lost people coming to our city because we didn't have this city manager. I'd like to know what companies those are. I know we lost Amazon because we didn't want to be a cheap date. I want to know why anybody else isn't coming to Los Panos. I don't think it has anything to do with Mr. Pinero. The other item I had is what Deborah Lewis had mentioned, was a 5-0 vote. I've never heard of this. We live in a democracy. It's either two-thirds or a simple majority. Why is Los Panos being different than everybody else out there? Now, I will let other people talk who want to talk about all of Mr. Pinero's qualifications that he's bringing to our city. I hope it's not only that he's a businessman, because if that's true with what his past record, I've been a businessperson since I was 17 stocking shelves that save on. That doesn't make, it's a person who signs the front of a check, not the back of a check. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Domingo Sanaval. I'm the new vice president for the Chamber of Commerce. I want to come and introduce the new event as have with our new partner, Downtown Association. So I was working like a big family. So the new event is going to be Mothers in the Park. And it's going to be together in Pacheco Park. It's going to start at 9 o'clock, all the way to 7:30. I'll make it one day, because I want to, the families have the Sunday to enjoy what, you know, with the mom and have a fun. So us doing these more family-oriented, us doing more entertainment for the mothers and everything. I've got to do a lot of gifts for, you know, for the families coming. And it's one of the new things the chamber is doing, and more things to come. And I want to give a big thank you to one of the city workers, Rudy. He works in the development, in the development department. Actually, it's been an awesome help for the chamber and actually help for the community. So it's a lot of people, they come to me and they say, I go see Rudy. And Rudy helped me bad and beyond. So Rudy is one of the people, they have a personality. He have the thing to help another people. And I wanted you guys to know that I want to thank him for everything he does. Thank you.
Good evening. How y'all doing? Man, I won't be long. It's pretty intense in here. Man, can everybody just take a deep breath? Relax? I'm Pastor John Bell from Our Father's House. And on behalf of Our Father's House and Bishop Doug Young, our leader, who is out of town, he sends his regrets that he can't be here today in person. We want to thank our mayor and each of the city council members and each person that's here. I feel the unity and the bond of peace. So after investigating the facts, they have made the decision to consider city manager, of the city manager, Josh Pinero. We feel that this is the step in the right direction and we look forward to our future as Los Panos. And the potential and prosperity and the renewed hope and vision as we forge a new path for our deserving city. We are standing with you and we are committed to helping you in any way that we can. May the Lord bless each and every one of us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Javier Caltenko. I'm a public information officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration. And I'm just here to provide a little information about the disaster assistance that we are providing. Merced County is part of the declaration that we have here in California. And individuals, as well as homeowners, renters, businesses can apply for disaster assistance with the Small Business Administration. Merced County, or here in Los, it used to be Los Banos, right? But now it's called Los Banos, okay? So people here can actually apply for disaster assistance. You know, for homeowners and renters, the first thing, first step to apply, you know, they need to apply with FEMA first. And if they're referred to SBA, they need to, well, we suggest that they should fill out the application with the Small Business Administration as part of the recovery process. Now, one of the reasons why it's important is because those individuals that cannot be approved for a loan with the Small Business Administration, they can be referred back to FEMA. So we don't want them to be, to miss out on recovery that they can actually receive from FEMA. Now, as I mentioned, we help businesses. They can get up to $2 million for any physical damage that they suffered, or $2 million for economic injury. Or it could be a combination of the two, sorry. Homeowners can qualify up to $200,000 to repair their primary residence. And homeowners and renters can qualify up to $40,000 to replace any personal property they lost. And up to now, we have approved more than $25 million in the whole, I would say, the whole state for this declaration. And, well, that's pretty much what I want to talk about right now. Okay? Well, thank you very much.
Anyone else in public forum?
Thank you, council and mayor, for hearing us today. I'll apologize about my stutter right off the bat. But I run a small business in town. It's just a pool company. And I've been blessed with this town since I moved here, about 12 years ago or so. When I first moved here, I thought it was just going to be something, you know, temporary deal, but I realized we have a hidden gem here. And I've really been trying to help out these past five or 10 years, a lot more now that I have kids and a family and everything. So I took over the, helped take over the Little League last year with Mr. Capresso, and we really changed a lot around. And it's been, it's been really good. And we dealt with, Joe Heim helped a lot. And Josh was over there quite a bit, actually, before, before he was released, or whatever the term is. And it was, it was really nice because I just felt like a family somewhat with what was going on. And it took a little time to release some funds and help, but we got new scoreboards and we got a lot of, you know, a lot of upgrades for the kids this year. And besides baseball, I've been helping with, you know, anything lately, just to keep busy and whatnot. But I'm excited at the direction our town's going. And I think what, what she was saying about companies leaving and whatnot, you know, a lot of companies that come into town, they want growth and they want a future, you know, for whatever it is. And I think, you know, there's a lot of us here that really want to push forward and move forward. And there's a lot of us that want to keep small, but our town has grown so much that that we have to do everything we can for our kids and for everything right now. And not just kids, for our businesses, for whatever it is. Because we're going to other towns and we see beautiful complexes and beautiful, just amazing, amazing stuff everywhere. And we're such, we have so much traffic through town and so many new people coming in that I think if it goes in the right direction, I think everybody's going to be happy with, you know, voting yes on the new things and voting yes for kids, even though it's a little bit of money here and there. And I know Josh, it's a million dollars or whatever the deal is, but I don't even know how the suit deal works. But I think that's small compared to what, what he could put in if he comes back. And this isn't just for Josh, it's just for whoever the next person is. I think it should be somebody that really goes to businesses and goes, talks to people and helps with everything and has a positive outlook on it. So thank you, everybody, for listening. And, oh yeah, and we will be asking for future funds for the Little League and stuff. So thank you for whatever votes go yes. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Anna McCauley, Los Panos resident for, next year, next month will be 26 years. And, you know, haven't seen the growth here, except for a bunch of homes. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but this reminds me of stopping the football game at eight seconds and say, hey, what went wrong with our game? Let's start it over. Well, why are we having all these issues about litigation and everything now? If people had questions before in these last few months, why didn't they bring them up? You know, if we needed independent arbitration or whatever. That's what I don't understand. You know, sometimes it's a little late to be calling for a reassessment or everything else when we had all these months. And if there were issues, they should have been brought up then. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the public forum?
Evening, mayor, city council. I had an opportunity during COVID for Christmas fundraiser through the Kiwanis to spend the day with Josh. Really didn't know much about him, other than his early high school days, managing a fast food chain here in Los Panos. And knew him as a hard-working young man. So I had the entire day with him assisting and by his side. I just want to say that everything that was expressed to me from his mouth was very much in focus with the city. A lot of heart, a lot of drive, a lot of desire to help make things better. Things that maybe didn't cost a fortune to do, but use some good common sense. I'm a businessman here, been in business for 22 years, lived here for 26. I was just really impressed with his heart and his, his drive to help make the city better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, most of you know me already. I'm mayor, city council, all the great management we have here, things like that. I'm here on behalf of Chamber of Commerce here in Los Panos. And I just wanted to go over a few things with you folks, just so we can kind of keep up to date and see how things are progressing and that sort of thing. By the way, I'm going to get my own plug-in. I sponsor two baseball teams every year, no matter what, and I'd go out there with a mask on and play baseball with any of these fellows anytime they want to, want to try it. Okay, so, anyway, that's a different story. All right. He also does my pool. All right, so as far as upcoming events are concerned, we have the Spring Street Fair Saturday, April 15th, tax day for some of us, which we all kind of, nevermind. And I want to thank our sponsor for that event, Sutter Health Memorial Hospital. All flyers, applications, along with membership listings and full event calendar can be found on the chamber website, lospanos.com. A new event that's come on the calendar is a Mother's Day in the park. It will be located at Pacheco Park. However, it will only be a one-day event on Saturday, May 13th. And that will run from 9 to 7:30. New members that we've added, and I hope I don't mispronounce one of them, but Centia Boutique has been added, and that's with Alfonso Centia, Centia. Amaya's Agua Fresca is Carmela Cruz Amaya. That's the two that have been added so far. As far as mixers are concerned, the chamber has invited Los Panos Downtown Association to partner up and host this event, mixer together. They have agreed, and it will be on February 28th at the chamber office at 5:30. So that would be, that would be a great event for any of the folks here and general public that wanted to attend. That would be great, too, so they could get a good idea of what we have going on along those lines. And then finally, a point that wanted to drive home, the Los Panos Chamber is always looking for, looking to find new ways to help and get back to the city of Los Panos, either by supporting a local business or organizing community events, all while promoting the or organizing community events, all while promoting the city of Los Banos. If you or someone you know would like more information on how to become a Chamber member, sponsor an event, or become a director or ambassador, please contact Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, either by phone or our website, again, losbanos.com, or just walk into the, uh, walk into the office and, uh, and we'd be glad to have somebody take care of that. And, uh, again, if you, if you, if you ever need any help from me or, uh, or the Chamber, but me personally, I'm, I'm there for you and I can, and I'll help you make things happen. All I got, all you got to do is ask, and it'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else in the public? All right. I'll, this time, actually, uh, I'll ask our city clerk, do we have anything written in?
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, as an employee of the city of Los Banos, as well as a resident and taxpayer in this city, I am absolutely dumbfounded by the terms and conditions set forth in bringing Josh Panero back as city manager. It is very apparent that this entire situation is unethical. Please explain to me how we, as the city, can pay millions of general fund money to Josh Panero and hire him back when we supposedly can't afford to pay anything to hire new police officers, new firefighters, build a decent animal shelter, help the homeless, invest in the community's infrastructure by replacing dilapidated sewer and water lines? For example, the sewer pipe that broke and leaked tons of raw sewage into CCID's main canal at Crest Hills. If you vote to bring him back as city manager, you owe a valid explanation to all of us in this community as to why you are robbing us of the opportunity to feel safe and have the protection of additional public safety staff. Explain why we have a rundown animal shelter that should be condemned. Explain why we look the other way when we see homeless sleeping out on the sidewalks. And also give us a valid reason why you don't care that our infrastructure is so old that it is breaking and contaminating water and causing health hazards. Please enlighten us on what Josh Panero has accomplished that was so amazing that you are willing to overlook all of these items that need attention. The projects and goals that were completed during his short time here were already in place. As a city employee, I can 100% tell you that those are not his accomplishments. City department heads and their staff are the ones that did the work, and they deserve recognition, not Josh. It's obviously no longer what is best for the city and our residents. It is about creating an unstoppable four-to-one vote to gain power and control. How is the stipulation in the proposed contract that Josh can't be terminated unless he is voted out by all council members and mayor fair? We now have a biased council that is setting him up to be untouchable. None of you have been an employee while Josh was city manager. You have not experienced the unprofessional, domineering manner in which he operates. You have not witnessed him yell at other professionals from outside agencies and belittle them. Josh Panero lacks the experience and governmental knowledge that the city needs in a leader in order to be successful. The way in which he conducts himself and represents the city is embarrassing. The fact that the city is willing to entertain his outrageous requests is downright shameful and humiliating. Why hasn't the council reached out to us employees for our input and experiences that we've had with Josh? Do our opinions as employees and residents not matter? Because I can tell you that the number of employees that do not want Josh back greatly outweigh those that do. He was previously terminated after having grievances filed against him. So, now you bring him back to show those that spoke up that you don't care about any wrongdoing, as long as the council will benefit from it in some way. There are a large number of employees, ranging from department heads down to part-time staff, that are not willing to speak out at the public forum because we fear retaliation. If Josh is not afraid to come after an entire city, what would hold him back from targeting an individual that is not in favor of his return? This is not only sickening and disheartening, but it will without a doubt create a volatile work environment for many. Respectfully, a concerned resident and city employee.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am writing to you tonight because I feel extremely uneasy and upset after reading the council agenda for tonight and the details that pertain to Josh Panero's potential rehiring and the settlement conditions that his legal counsel has presented to the city of Los Banos. I am an employee of the city of Los Banos, and like many of those who can relate with me and will understand, I cannot publicly speak at the public forum due to the fear of potentially being retaliated against if Josh indeed returns to work for the city. What I want to make clear tonight is not only the council members, but most importantly, to the residents and taxpayers of this city, is that since the termination of Josh Panero, the city employees of this town have worked diligently and exceptionally well, even without Josh serving as the city manager. The goals that were once set before us in the past are still being managed and processed in the most transcendent way. In addition, the city has inherited even more challenging tasks that have also been consolidated by various staff. There were many times that I recall when members of the public came forward to the podium and spoke about certain projects that were completed because of Josh, and I would like to shed some light on this. The workload and goals that were met have already commenced and were under the direction and management of various city employees and previous employees, that many of which do not get any recognition because, quite frankly, that's just our job. It is the hard work and dedication done behind the scenes by city employees that Josh has no problem taking credit for. If in the eyes of the public and council, Josh was an asset to the city, it was surely because he had some amazing individuals who worked endless hours to fulfill his ever-demanding requests and answer questions that he did not have ans, he did not have the answers to. In addition, I would like to know how our legal counsel finds it acceptable to bring back a terminated city manager to further lead over 100-plus employees when it was publicly announced that our previous city council had voted in favor of his termination due to the evidence that was provided to them? If a similar scenario were to happen with any other employee who was at-will, were the four council members who were in favor of Josh returning also worked diligently and against all ethical and moral values in bringing that employee back? As an employee, I don't feel comfortable or safe in this matter. I often ask myself, will this result in a retaliation from Josh in the workplace? Will Josh return with a sense of seppurity due to having the majority of this council on his side? Also, keep in mind that, under the conditions of the settlement, if Josh were to act in such a way, an entire council would require a 5-0 vote in order to remove him. And for those of you who don't know, Begonia and Jones are his longtime friends who will never vote to remove him. So, I ask you this, where does the loyalty lie? In fact, when council members have their time to report at the end of this meeting, I invite Brett Jones, Kenneth Lambert, Douglas Begonia, and Mayor Paul Yanez to report when was the last time they ever reached out to staff or the city of Los Banos employees, how they felt about potentially allowing Josh to return to their work environment? Ask the people who will work at least 40 hours a week under this man how they feel about the potential return of this individual. Because in reality, you not only represent the public, you represent us, the employees. And I would like to believe that the day you each took office, you promised that your intentions were to protect the city and not for self-fulfillment. Bring him back a city manager who broke the rule and is suing his city for 1.8 million plus, does not have a good intention on the city. I encourage the city council to pay out Mr. Panero his 1.8 million and turn him towards those wonderful corporations that he would boast about. Thank you, Jane.
Good evening, Mayor Yanez and City Council. We are, we are unable to attend tonight's meeting, but would like to voice our support for the rehiring of Josh Panero as city manager. Ten months or so ago, Josh was unfairly terminated from his position as city manager. In a very short amount of time as city manager, Josh had our city going in a positive direction with many accomplishments. He was on a mission to make Los Banos the city it deserves to be. Unfortunately, due to his commitment and enthusiasm, he ruffled some feathers, some feathers, and was set up to fail. Since his termination, our city had two interim city managers and has hired headhunters costing taxpayers thousands of dollars. In the meantime, Los Banos sits stagnant. It's time we move forward, the citizens deserve this. We urge you to bring back Josh Panero. Respectfully, Tom and Lori Bellotti. I am writing to the public forum for the Los Banos City Council. My name is Tony Roman. After retiring, Los Banos has become my home for the past 20 years. I am writing today about a very concerning subject that is to be voted on at tonight's meeting, the hiring of a new city manager. To the mayor and city council, I have many questions and concerns. The biggest is the 1.8 million dollar to be given to Mr. Panero from unallocated general funds. I want to ask the council to address why they feel 1.8 million dollars is appropriate for an employee fired from an at-will position. This abouts, this amounts to criminal theft from public tax dollars. Is the city attorney willing to publicly state that this is a sound decision? Is there any attorney representing the city in this case? Would they be willing to state publicly that this is a sound decision? Can any city council member state why they would vote to rehire someone who has sued the city? Mr. Mayor, I turn to you. I have twice voted for you. I believe you want to make this community better. I ask you, is Mr. Panero worth 2 million dollars? Could we not have hired someone with experience for 2 million dollars? Mr. Panero has no experience for the job and will receive 215,323, 215,323 dollars every year, along with a 1.8 million check from our pockets. To our city council, I ask, how many projects have you funded for 1.8 million dollars? I have not seen that many in my time here, and that goes back to 2001. I would like to know what we could do for that much money, what projects will be cut because of this foolish decision. To Mr. Panero, I ask you, are you here to help this community? I understand you are a man of faith, yet you are willing to steal 2 million from your hometown. Could this money not go towards the improvements we all wish for? How can you look people in the eyes and tell them you are here to help them when you take, when you have taken so much? In this vote tonight, you are asking for 2 million dollars. Is this your character to steal from your own? And to ask for a five-to-vote, five-two-zero vote for removal? Are you that insecure about your ability to give back to this community? What is the need for such a lopsided requirement? I ask our city council members to defend this decision. On what basis are we negotiating a five-to-zero vote? Are, are other cities offering such foolish agreements? To the public, I ask you to wake up. I have seen many city councils in my time in Los Banos. The days of Tommy Jones were not quick to forget. We are returning to them, wake up. Mr. Panero has no experience in government, no experience in leadership. He is a personal friend to members of this city council. Council is deciding tonight to give 2 million dollars of taxpayer money based on friendship. Where is the transparency? Where are the council members getting from this 2 million dollars? I ask the public to open their eyes. This is a story of three council members robbing the city in broad daylight, and we are all to accept it because many people do not like Councilmember Lewis or city staff. I have seen enough of Ms. Lewis to know why so many dislike her, but she is not giving 2 million dollars to her friend. The public should know why so, so much money is going towards someone so unqualified. Why is the city negotiating such a lopsided deal? Mr. Panero has no experience to do the job, but is asking for more than anyone ever has. Councilmember Douglas Begonia, I understand that you are a teacher. What lesson are you teaching to give an unqualified friend such a heist? A vote tonight is an admission that this council has no interest in bringing a hospital here or new roads. Please tell me why you believe someone so inexperienced could complete such improvements? How already we respect a manager that has no qualifications for the job? What partnerships can a man that sues his own town, his own hometown make? Mr. Panero won the Los Banos lottery by being friends with members of this council, and the public should know that. I have never been so upset by the city I love so much. I thank the city council members for their time, but I ask that they pause and reflect on this so-called deal before voting to approve tonight. Dear City Clerk, I would just like to start by saying that I think hiring Josh Panero to again become city manager would be the biggest mistake this council and the city can make. Josh did nothing for this city except to pretend to be nice to the residents, to trick them into thinking he is a nice guy and that he is here for their community. But in reality, he was doing, all he was doing was being a nice guy so that whenever he needed anything from the residents, they would be on his side. Josh has no experience being a city manager. For him to have been hired in the first place with no experience was astonishing and stupid, but to then hire him again is asinine. The only thing that he can take credit for, if you can even call it that, is his nine months here at the city, is him helping get a sign put up at Pacheco Park. I say helping because Joe Heim and the Parks and Recreation Staff are the ones who did 99.9% of the work, but yet he claimed it was his idea in implementation. I would like someone other than Brett Jones, Josh's longtime friend, to tell the community what else Josh did in his time as city manager that benefited the community. What projects did he start? What projects that were already ongoing when he came on, did he complete or contribute to? In other words, what did he do? Was he an exceptional city manager? He should not be considered for this position again. He put himself into situations that he had no business in. There was no reason for him to be involved in the hiring of potential incoming and so, city employees. This is what the managers of each department are for, which makes me believe that he didn't trust his staff, which does not make for good morale in the workplace. He should not be picking people to work in departments that the department heads do not agree with. He doesn't have to work with them on a day-to-day basis like the staff have to do. How can we bring back a person who has no experience or background to run a city and pay him 1.8 million dollars in this process? How is that, how is it that the city can't find the money to invest in itself, but can pay Josh Panero 1.8 million dollars out of the taxpayers' money that should be going toward the improvement of our city? I am a taxpayer, and I didn't agree to have my taxes be paid to someone that is incompetent and incapable of running an entire city. I wanted to write this letter to have it on record and let the council know what a mistake it would be to bring Josh back. But I know everything I have said will fall on deaf ears because the council doesn't care about what the residents want or need. They have their own agenda, and that is all they care about, no matter how it affects the community. A concerned citizen, taxpayer, and city employee. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, it is complete, I'm completely appalled at not only the terms of Josh Panero's proposed employment contract, but at the ridiculous settlements amount the city will be voting on to approve tonight. How can the council, in good consciousness, approve a settlement of 1.8 million dollars, which will be paid out of the general fund, a fund that has always been greatly protected? These are taxpayer dollars. If Josh Panero can take the money of hard-working, tax-paying citizens without guilt, what makes him an ethical person to run a city in its coffers? By taking that money, in addition to his 115,000 dollars of back pay, he is robbing the city. This is the equivalent of 1.8 million dollars in funds that Mary Ann Jones embezzled from the city of Los Banos. Josh should be ashamed of himself. 1.8 million dollars is a lot of money that could be better used towards other general fund expenses, such as our public safety, who is always short-staffed and underpaid, upgrade and replacement of park equipment and irrigation, increase park staffs to properly maintain public facilities and city-owned trees, and very old infrastructure that should have been replaced years ago. Why should Josh be paid lost wages? If a city employee loses their job, they are expected to go out and look for a new job. I would like the council to give an explanation as to how this is acceptable. I understand the manner that Josh was fired may not have needed an investigation. However, Josh is not without fault, and I believe he was not a good fit for this city. If he was looking to make a dime off the citizens of this town, we should have just paid him out and parted ways with him. Why is he getting handed a huge settlement and getting his job back? Why did the council members never reach out to all city staff and find out what working for Josh was really like? What did Josh accomplish that was so admirable? Once an employee is fired, their Once an employee is fired, there is bound to be retaliation of said employees rehired or re-employed in the same workplace with the people that complained about him in the first place. Trust has been broken. Josh accomplished nothing while he was city manager. Anything positive done during his previous time here was because of good people working under him. He is very immature and not ready for such a big task or title as city manager. He ruined the connections and bridges staff has worked years to establish with both public and private entities. If anything, the city has made great strides with him, not here holding staff and projects back from moving forward. Josh is not for the people. He is for himself. The council that votes to give him, all he is asking for is not for the people. They have set themselves up for a four-to-one vote on everything, and they will get all their needs and wishes met with this turnout. The fact that we are about to change his contract to a 5-0 vote is mind-blowing. Now Josh will be invincible and untouchable because he will never have a 5-0 vote as long as he has four friends on the council. I have never heard of such terms and personally find them unethical. I sure hope the council thinks long and hard before moving forward with what is proposed in the staff report regarding settlement and reemployment. Please do the right thing and do not settle for these terms. At the very minimum, he needs a three-two vote to be removed. I am writing this letter in regards to the settlement agreement on the table for discussion and consideration tonight from Josh Panero. I am saddened and disappointed in the members of this council who are pushing so heavily for this item to go through. 1.8 million dollars tossed up in the air, never to be seen again, all going to someone who you allowed to bully and scare you into becoming a corrupt council. Josh brought a presence to the workplace that was not desirable, nor was it good for morale. He was hovering helicopter leader, made impulsive decisions and demands. I am not only a city employee, but I am also a parent who feels saddened for the children and others in our community who could have greatly benefited from the 1.8 million dollars in so many different ways. We as city employees strive to do our best and enrich our communities on a daily basis, and this crooked person who supposedly cares about Los Banos is so eager to take from the pockets of those he is leading and making decisions for. Those who support this man returning should be ashamed of yourselves. I take pride in working and for the city, but now I feel scared for our community that the future of us and our young ones are decided in corruption. And those are all the comments I received.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this time, I'm going to close the public forum and move on to item six, which is the consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a council member. Uh, do you want to? Yes.
So there is a lot of those letters that didn't have names to them. Can you submit or can you give us a copy of all those letters?
Right now?
You want to go through the consent agenda items?
Items on the consent agenda are called order number 2372500 for 2372300 and the amount of 188,500 $18.18. Minutes for the January 30th, 2023 special city council meeting. Minutes for the February 1st, 2023 city council meeting. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Let's move on to item seven. Peninsula Clean Energy Presentation Update. For this, we'll go to our interim city manager, Susa Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Um, we have representatives from Peninsula Clean Energy here today. Uh, Mark Hirschman from, he's the Government Relations Manager. I'm probably totally butchering your director, um, your title. And Sandra Benetti is here as well. She is our, um, Relations Manager. I'm probably also butchering her title, um, but they will be giving us a presentation um, tonight on the launch of Peninsula Clean Energy um, and the various programs that they provide for the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to them.
Uh, City Manager Elms, delighted to be here this evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, as indicated, Mark Hirschman, Director of Government Affairs for Peninsula Clean Energy. Sandra Benetti, who's our manager of Community Relations and specifically for Los Banos. Um, we are rapidly approaching the anniversary, the one-year anniversary of Peninsula Clean Energy, uh, providing service in Los Banos, and so we wanted to give you an update on how things are going and entertain any questions you or the community may have. You may have heard this before, but we are most proud of the fact that we provide clean energy at a lower rate for Los Banos residents. And, uh, that clean power has been, uh, 100% clean power at a 5% discount from what PG&E customers are paying. This is for the sourcing of the, the energy. We came to Los Banos after a vote of the city council in October of 2020, and immediately thereafter, uh, the council, as a part of that process, appointed the mayor to serve on our Board of Directors. And so, uh, each mayor in succession has been a member of the Board of Directors, and we're delighted to welcome Mayor Yanis as our current Board Director. And per the city council's instructions, the, uh, city manager is the alternate, uh, member when the director, the director is not able to attend. Um, enrollment began, uh, April of last year, and we're pleased to report that we have approximately 90% plus, uh, enrollment by, uh, Los Banos, uh, residents and businesses. Um, it's an opt-out system, and, uh, and so, uh, the, uh, the math says about 10% have opted out. Um, but again, customers who have, uh, decided to accept Peninsula Clean Energy service are receiving a 5% discount off of PG&E services. And, uh, so through the first eight months, we only have those numbers available for April through November of 2022. Uh, there has been 779,272 dollars saved by Los Banos customers. As I mentioned before, our, uh, energy is 100% clean and 50% renewable. The distinction there is that certain, uh, types of energy are considered to be renewable, such as wind, uh, and solar. Uh, small hydro is considered by the state of California to be renewable. Large hydro projects are not. Um, and so that's why we get to the 100% clean, uh, 50% renewable figure. And this chart is rather small type, so we've highlighted a few of the boxes, which are those sources of energy that we derive locally. Um, at the top of the list there is, uh, I'll get to that in a moment, but I want to call your attention to actually to the one at the bottom of the list, um, which is three megawatts of power, which we are, um, uh, planning to, uh, bring online in 2024. And this is a solar project, uh, located near Dos Palos. Um, and, uh, this is, uh, energy that we are, um, going to bring online in order to serve disadvantaged communities here in Los Banos. And so I highlight that. Um, but, uh, the two larger projects, one is already in place and has been, uh, for several years now, and that's the Wright Solar, uh, Project. 200 megawatts is our largest source of, uh, clean energy. It's renewable solar energy, uh, out on Billy Wright Road. Um, and, uh, we are under contract and proceeding with 76 milliwatts of, uh, for wind farm. Um, and, uh, that's being installed, and we expect that to come online. Uh, that's on the Gonzaga Ridge, and expect that to come online next year. And with that, I'd like to turn, uh, over our, uh, rest of our presentation to Sandra.
Thank you. Um, so I'll just got to go over, uh, how it works again as a refresher. Uh, so how it works is Peninsula Clean Energy provides the electricity, a generation from sources that are 100% greenhouse gas-free, um, at lower rates than PG&E, uh, while PG&E continues to provide the electricity delivery and billing services. So PG&E still owns and reads your electric meter. They send your monthly bill, um, and they provide the same maintenance and other repair services that they always have. Uh, Peninsula Clean Energy customers now, though, save 5% on the electricity generation service, and they pay that one bill to PG&E. Um, and as Mark said, over 90% of our customers in Los Banos are receiving clean electricity and some savings from, from that. Um, so here is a screenshot of a joint rate comparison that's published by PG&E. Anytime they adjust their rates, um, so this is the most recent one that was published. It's currently on their website. This is from June and July. Um, and, uh, here you'll see it's an estimate of what the average monthly bill would be in Los Banos. It's an average. It's, it's just for residential customers, uh, specifically the E1 rate. Um, and it's based off a monthly usage of 618 kilowatt hours. Uh, so I'll, I'll show you in the next few slides what this looks like in the form of a bill. So this page here, uh, this slide is, is what most customers probably remember what their first page of their electricity bill looked like before they were a Peninsula Clean Energy customer. Um, and so you'll see the current electric charges line. It bundles together the delivery and the generation charges into one line. Doesn't break it out to show you, uh, what exactly you're paying in that 211 dollar and 50 cent charge. Doesn't break it down. Um, but this next slide here, uh, we're kind of giving you a closer look. So that charge, it includes the delivery and the generation charge based on that, uh, rate comparison that I, I showed a few slides back. Um, so based on those rates and that usage, this customer would be paying 134 dollars and 18 cents for electric delivery and 77 dollars and 32 cents for generation. Together, that's the 211 dollars and 50 cents that was on the previous slide. Now, as far as the Peninsula Clean Energy customer, uh, that same usage, using that rate schedule, this is what their bill would look like. So they are paying the same delivery fee because it's the same service, uh, that they're receiving from, uh, PG&E. No matter what, if you're a Peninsula Clean Energy customer or not, you're still receiving that delivery service from PG&E. Um, but the generation component, you'll see that they're paying slightly less. They're paying 72 dollars and 63 cents. Um, so they have their 5% savings, which is 4 dollars and 69 cents. So their bill is slightly less, but they're receiving clean energy, and they don't have to, uh, pay more for that. Um, and then also our solar customers. Uh, so they receive benefits on a few different sides of the spectrum. So, um, customers that are net, um, net producers, they, they, uh, have extra electricity that they're selling back to the grid. They, they, uh, earn a retail price, uh, plus one cent per kilowatt hour more. So they're, they're receiving, uh, a bigger credit than they would have if they had stayed with PG&E. Um, on the flip side, if they're not producing enough electricity and they're selling back to the grid, uh, or excuse me, if they're not producing enough electricity and they're buying from the grid, they're buying at a 5% discount. Um, another change, um, is that the credits roll over month to month. So instead of an annual true-up, this is, this is taken out of that annual true-up process, and it is reconciled monthly. So monthly, you'll see that charge or that credit on your bill. Um, and they do roll over, so that credit will roll over month to month. It doesn't expire. You don't lose it. Um, for any credits that are over 100 dollars come April, you get cashed out. So that check, uh, will be sent to you for that excess credit of over 100 dollars. Um, and then now there's choices in Los Banos where there wasn't any choices before for electricity generation. So previously, customers, when they would start, uh, electric service in Los Banos, they would sign up with PG&E and their electricity would come through PG&E. Um, they didn't have a choice before. Uh, now there's a choice. So, uh, the automatic enrollment, the way the state law is written, it's an automatic enrollment. Um, so the automatic service that folks are enrolled into is EcoPlus, uh, which Mark mentioned. It's 50% renewable, 100% carbon-free, um, and it's at a 5% lower rate than PG&E. Uh, folks that want to opt up, they can do so to get 100% renewable energy to the Eco 100 service. Um, and this is at a premium of about four or five dollars more a month for an average consumer. Um, and then, uh, like I said, there's choices, so they can also opt out to continue receiving that electricity generation from PG&E. They should just be aware that they will be paying PG&E's rates, which are higher. Um, but folks that have access to energy discounts, um, from PG&E, they still maintain that same access. So folks that are income-qualified into the CARE or FARA programs, they keep those discounts, um, as well as customers with qualifying medical conditions for the medical baseline program. Um, and then customers are still eligible for the LIHEAP, which is Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program. Uh, so that discount offers a one-time annual credit for utility bills and then also energy efficiency upgrades. Um, and then customers that might be behind on their bills, they still have access to the payment arrangement plans and also the arrears, uh, management plan. And then folks can learn more about that at our website, which is pencleanenergy.com/lowerbill. Um, and then so to provide the public with information, uh, about our service to Los Banos, uh, Peninsula Clean Energy developed a dedicated web, uh, webpage for Los Banos community folks. Um, and that's again, it's pencleanenergy.com/los-banos. Um, and then our staff has enjoyed opportunities to, uh, participate in several of our local community events. Um, this includes the downtown street fairs, um, the Merced County Spring Fair, um, and then also the Police Department's National Night Out. We were able to be out there and mingle with the community and share some information. Um, and then we've also been fortunate to have opportunities to provide sponsorships, uh, to local organizations and events. Um, and then we're also sensitive to the needs of the community, and we look to provide the information in languages that the community needs. So a lot of our, our collateral is published in both English and Spanish. Um, and then last month, uh, Peninsula Clean Energy awarded 14 grants to 13 community-based organizations, and one of them was in Los Banos. And that's Cultiva La Salud. Um, it's a Spanish-language community outreach organization, and they're dedicated to supporting healthy living. Um, and this is to expand public education about energy bill discounts, um, and then home energy assistance by conducting like focus groups, um, and then enrollment support for these bill discounts, um, programs in Los Banos. And then we have our programs for the community. So we have multiple programs that we opened up to Los Banos, and we had some great participation. Um, I'll go over those numbers in a sec, but, uh, the used EV program, we have rebates up to 6,000 dollars if you're in the market for used EV. Um, e-bikes, we opened up that program last, uh, June, and then, uh, it closed in the summertime, and we provided some discounts. It's up to 1,000 dollars, uh, off for, uh, e-bike for income-qualified customers. Um, and then we have incentives for EV chargers up to 5,500 per port. Um, we have an energy efficiency home upgrade program. Um, it's no-cost home repairs. Um, and this is, uh, for income-qualified customers who have energy efficiency, um, issues or electrification measures they're looking to do. And the average that we saw was about 6,500 dollars per home. Um, so that was, again, no cost to the customer. Uh, we also have incentives for electric appliances, like a heat pump water heater and heat pump HVAC systems. Those rebates are 3,000 dollars or more for heat pump water heaters, and then 3,500 or more for heat pump HVAC systems, plus additional, uh, funds, uh, set aside for electrical panel upgrades if that's needed. Um, and then kind of coupling with that, we have the 0% financing program. So 0% loan, um, on bill. Uh, there's no credit checks. It's up to 10,000 dollars for, um, electrification measures. And it's, uh, the terms are two to 10 years, just depends on what the customer wants. Um, and then we also have an appliance recycling program, uh, that we offer to the community. Recycling program of refrigerators and freezers. It's free pickup. Um, and then we mail a 50 dollar rebate to the customer. Um, and so in Los Banos, uh, this past year, we had 12 or so more, uh, folks apply for the EV rebate, and three of them have redeemed that so far. Uh, we had 12, uh, rebates issued for the e-bikes. And then we had two folks take advantage of the appliance rebates. Uh, one person's currently in the 0% loan program. Uh, we had 20 customers that were part of the home energy efficiency upgrade program, and then three people that, uh, participated in the refrigerator recycling. Um, and then also for public facilities, we did work with the city of Los Banos. As you guys probably remember, we recently talked about that. Um, so the city joined our first round of government PV photovoltaic program. Um, that's for local jurisdictions in our territory. And then two sites in Los Banos were selected, and, uh, they were selected based on electricity load and then, um, the capacity for installation of the solar systems. Um, and the city council approved the participation in this program back in April. Um, and then we're looking at, uh, expecting construction to begin possibly by the end of the year, but it could be, uh, quarter one of 2024. And at that point, construction would be, uh, targeted to be completed by the end of 2024. And I'll go back to Mark.
And, uh, thank you, Sandra. As, as mentioned, uh, there is, uh, community participation, and, uh, we are locally- As, as mentioned, there is community participation and we are a local agency. So Mayor Yanis is, is the director on our board and we're delighted to have him as a part of the board. And we also have a member of the Los Banos community who serves on our Citizens Advisory Committee. Our Citizens Advisor also meets once a month and, and so we're delighted to have that participation. And I think that wraps it up. Again, our contact information is available on our website and be delighted to hear from the council and others in the community if there are any questions, if there's anything that would require, be needed for further information or involvement, we'd love to hear about it. And we thank you so much for this opportunity. It's been terrific being in Los Banos for the past year and look forward to many more years of continued partnership.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Mayor, I do have a couple of questions. In your presentation, you have the energy, you talk about renewable sources such as solar, wind, GO, and on and on. With your, your wind, is that totally governed renewable by wind? Or is there any other sources that are attached to those windmills that use other forms of generation, such as oil, gas, or anything like that?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that question. You're asking whether the-
Well, you have these large windmills that are up. And so I'm trying to find out if they just turn on their own by virtue of wind? Or do you have some other propellant that you use to help turn those windmills, such as oil, gas, or some other form?
I, I'm not sure I know the answer to that question. I'll, I'll need to have to get back to you on that. You're, you're asking whether they're motorized?
Well, if they're motorized by some other fuel that has to be used to motorize them, you know, because, you know, I'm, I'm looking at 100% clean energy. So I'm trying to find out if this is part of the clean energy or if there are some other sources used to generate those windmills to get them to move. Because I've heard in, in the past, I don't know for sure, that windmills are, use fuel to, to turn the blades so that it generates this clean energy.
I don't know if ours are using anything other than, than the wind to, to generate. So I'll, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. And maybe I can ask the mayor when you attend the meetings if you can find that out and perhaps report back to us. It's just a curiosity on my, my part, especially since our country is moving us so quickly into green. And, you know, it's, it's always told to everyone that it's 100% clean. And so I'm just trying to determine if your company or your organization is actually 100% clean or are there other fuels that are used to generate the energy that you produce?
It's a good question. I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll get back to you for sure. We'll get back to the whole council. We'll share the answer with everybody.
All right. Anyone else have any questions regarding the report? No?
Thank, thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. So we're going to move on to item eight, consideration of adoption of city council resolution number 6611, accepting the 21, 22 fiscal year audit reports consisting of the annual comprehensive financial report and the government auditing standard report. And for this, we're going to go to interim finance director Kuhn.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First, I want to start off by thanking and commending the finance department staff for all the hard work that they put in every day, but especially in putting together the financial statements and supporting the audit. They, they do this along with all the other daily operational things that they have to do. So again, I wanted to make that clear. So the basic financial statements of the city have, they, for this fiscal year, basically we have the audit that is performed by Price Page and Company, and they've been our auditors, I believe, for eight years. The independent audit report is really what, the only thing that they generate. All the other schedules and, and, and statements and, and notes are all, are all generated by the department, I mean, the finance department. So what you have here is, is you, you have basic financial statements and these include both the government-wide and the fund financial statements. And with that, you have a required management discussion and analysis. And this is basically a narrative or an overview of the basic financial statements. Also, there's a transmittal letter that complements the MDNA, the management discussion and analysis. It should be read in conjunction with it, but that's more of a forward-looking document than it is a historic document such as the MDNA and the financial statements. So the State of California requires the city to be audited by CPAs, by certified public accountants. As I said, Price Page was our auditors for this year and they issued the independent auditor's report. Within that, they said that the financial statements were presented fairly in all material aspects and results to all of the different activities, governmental, business type and so forth. And the, the structure of the report is by, by governmental city as a whole and as fund level, but mostly from major fund levels. And any of these changes in, in these funds were presented materially and all were done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles within the United States or GAAP. So basically what that is, is it's an unmodified or clean opinion that, that we got. So the structure of these statements are, you have the basic financial statements and these include, as I said, the government-wide, which is showing the entire city as a whole, and then fund financial statements. The focus of these two statements are vastly different. One takes into more of a full accrual and all of, all resources, both short-term and long-term, all, all being presented in these statements. Whereas the fund statements are a snapshot of, of a year. So they're resources that are coming in and used within that year. Our recognition period extends past June 30 for about 60 days, but, and that's called the modified accrual period. So the major funds are determined utilizing two criteria. One is, is the balance sheet and the other is the statement of changes. And it corresponds with the percentage or how large of an impact each one of these funds have as a whole. First of all, the general fund is always considered major. It's really when we look at presenting the other major funds, it's looking at the special revenue and capital projects funds and to see how they are, impact the, the city government from, from a standalone basis. So as you go through and right after the independent audit report, you have the government-wide statements. As I said, that these, these look at the primary government's operations. So this is including all of the operations of the cities, whether it's water, wastewater, general government stuff. It's, it's, it's all presented here. And the five elements of, of net position, which is your first statement, are assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources, and net position. So these take place of a traditional balance sheet that would just have assets, liabilities, and a fund equity position. Of the net position, the categories are, is there's the net investment in capital assets, so our infrastructure net of, of any debt. Then you have any restricted resources or, and then unrestricted resources. The, the assets represent the capacity for the government to, along with deferred outflows. It represents the consumption of, of future periods. So, so you're, you're taking this and this is the ability for the government to utilize these assets, not just for a one-year period, but for an extended period of time. And then the liabilities are basically taking these and what those resources and what we're surrendering from those resources moving forward for, and it can extend from one year to multiple years. So in essence, short-term and long-term assets and liabilities. The, the statement of activities, which is the next, next statement, and this basically gives all of the activities predicated on programs. So within the program structure, you'll, you'll have various services that the city offers and then how it's funded. So it could be funded by charges for services or some kind of grant or the, the general taxation or the general revenue that the city is getting. So what this shows is it shows how much of those activities are supported by these charges within themselves. And then it gives it a net either positive or negative, the negative being that it's then funded by the general revenues of the city. So, so it's kind of giving you the overall picture of how a service is, is funded, so to speak. So then as you get into the other forms, and that is the fund levels, you have both your governmental funds and then your proprietary funds. They operate very differently from each other. The, the funds are basically, as I said, a snapshot of resources that are going to be utilized within, within that year. The major funds that we have for the city are the general fund, of course, the Impact B Special Revenue Fund, CDBG and Home Special Revenue Fund, Streets and Roads Special Revenue Fund, the Public Safety Special Revenue Fund, and then the Capital Grants Capital Projects Fund. These all met the criteria of, there's a 5% and a 10% rule, 5% being of the, the class of fund structure and then 10% being of the, of citywide. So these, these met all, all this criteria. All the others that didn't meet this criteria can be found in the combining financial statements and schedules behind these. And those individual non-major funds are, are in, in these schedules behind the notes. So in the fund statements, you'll have the balance sheet, which is assets and liabilities and, and statement of fund equity. You have your statement of revenue expenditures and changes in, in fund, fund balance. And then within those statements, you'll have reconciliations within those statements that show how the government-wide statements were, were reconciled to the fund statements. So you can see whether or not there was a long-term asset or liability that, that was not in the funds, but then made itself to the government-wide. So that, that's, that's important if you want to see why there's these big, big fluctuations between the statement, the government-wide statement and the fund statements. The proprietary fund statements are the enterprise funds of the city. This is the water, wastewater, airport, solid waste. I threw the internal service in there as well, but the internal services is, is, is the governmental activity side of, of, of how the city charges out all of its, its funds for specific services. And our internal services, retiree health, IT, and I believe other, I think our motor pool and, and other equipment. So the proprietary funds kind of mirror the, the government-wide funds in, in their structure because they're long-term in nature. And they, so they have a statement of net position, a statement of revenue and expense and change in that net, net position. And then what is very unique to these is the statement of cash flows. So statement of cash flow lets the reader know in a, in the current year, how much cash it's used for investing activities, financing activities, and, and operating activities. And so that, that statement's important so that you can see, it kind of gives you that, that one-year modified snapshot of, of what it takes to, to operate those funds as a Behind this are the notes to the basic financial statements. And I gave kind of a, a list of, of some of the major notes. There's more of those in there. There's the summary of accounting practices that the city uses. There's a footnote in there for cash investments, capital assets, and long-term debt. There's a, a pretty lengthy footnote in there for post-employment benefits for both health and retiree. And then there's a corrective act, active cleanup and post-closure care of the landfill, which is one of the larger liabilities of, that only impacts the, the, the city as a whole. And then after that, you have the statistical section with, which is trend information on property taxes and other demographic information. So the, the statistical section is, is unaudited and it's just, it's just more information for the reader. So other than the, the independent auditors report, we also received a report that's required by governmental auditing standards. This was also issued on February 10th. And this is over the internal control structure, over financial reporting. And it, it talks about the test of compliances and other provisions relating to laws, regulations, contracts, and, and grant agreements. This report produced no findings or material weaknesses within, within that. So like the independent auditors report, there, there was, it was kind of a, a clean opinion for, for that. Along with the financial audit, financial statements, the, there's also an audit communication letter that you, that was received. And that, what this does is it outlines any of the things that needed to be communicated to, to the council. One is, is if there were any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. There were none identified. Corrected or uncorrected misstatements. Any of the stuff that was identified were corrected. Really, the only one that came about was because of a new Gatsby pronouncement relating to leases. So it changed how leases were reported on the financial statements. And we really didn't have any leases that were apparent until we started looking at some of the enterprise functions. And, and what came about was there was some, some leases with landholders in regards to how those, those lands were farmed, even though they were city-owned. So anyway, there were small amounts and, and any of those were identified and corrected. There was no disagreements with management. So the auditors had, had no issues resolving any, any things that they found. During the audit, they did identify a couple of significant risks. And, and this was expenditures reported within the ARPA fund were co, were co-mingled by function. So we, we went back and, and, and read the Treasury's requirements for, for how the functionality of, of ARPA needed to be reported. And we made reclassifying entries to accounts that were identified by function. And then we received quite a bit of land that was transferred from the DLA, which is the, the former RDA that was taken over by an independent agency and the city. And what happened between the, the two entities was that the DLA and the city had different APNs in terms of the land that was transferred. So the one APN in particular. So we worked with the auditors and made the appropriate valuation on that, used the same estimated valuation based upon land that was purchased within that year. That the, primarily it was the police department land. And then rebooked everything, well, it was just that one, one piece of property and the auditors were, were fine with everything. So basically, after all of that, all of the risks that were identified were addressed and we received no findings. So nothing that, from a management level that we need to correct next year. So this is- next year. So this is kind of a quick analysis of what took place within just the structure of the audit. The financial statements themselves has a lot of information in there. So basically, I just put that into a Q and A to leave it to you to ask questions regarding any specific statement, any specific footnote, anything that you guys want that I can clarify. Other than that, the financial statements didn't really have a whole lot of changes from last year. So there's nothing really to highlight there. So I guess it's just if you guys have any questions regarding these statements, now is the time to ask.
Anyone on council have any questions related to this presentation and the report?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for that information.
Yep.
All right, let's move on to item 10, which is the Shaughnessy Village Park conceptual design presentation. Oh, okay. Yep, sorry about that. Good catch, good catch. All right, so can I get a motion to approve City Council Resolution number 6609, mending division, I'm sorry, number 6611, accepting the 2122 fiscal year audit reports consisting of the annual comprehension financial report and the government auditing standard report. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Councilmember Lambert?
I'll say again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Getting ahead of myself, getting ahead of myself. All right, now we'll move into item 10, which is the Shaughnessy Village Park conceptual design presentation. And you are not near on, but that's all right.
I'd like to thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for being available for our presentation tonight. We'll be going through, to me, a very exciting project, a new park that's going to be developed in Los Banos. We'll be going through a conceptual design tonight. We're seeking direction as well as comments from council. Once we're able to incorporate those, we would like to move forward with engineering and eventually construction and a grand opening and fun at the park. So I'll get started with the presentation here. So yes, why we're here is to construct a new park at the Shaughnessy Village subdivision. The subdivision was developed within the last few years. It's about 39.1 acres as a total subdivision. The park itself is 2.97 acres with a 1.73 detention basin as part of the park and in support of the 151 low-density and medium-density single-family residential homes in the area. The park location is within the boundary of Deans Way, Spatafore Street, Haley Street, and Columbia Drive, which is just north of College Greens. This park is located in the College Greens Landscape and Lighting District, which would be eventually how this park will be supported from an operational standpoint. The funding for the construction of the park will be coming from an impact fee, which is the Shaughnessy Village impact fee. So just real quickly, I hope that we all are in agreement of some of the benefits of parks. So parks provide important public resources that encourage active lifestyles. Hopefully, you can go to parks throughout the day and see kids playing, seniors walking, games, et cetera, playgrounds, all that. One of the biggest things that I really identify with this particular park is the identity that's going to create for the neighborhood. This is, again, a new neighborhood, new subdivision in the community, and it's really going to be something that's going to bring the community together and be that hub for the community and hopefully benefit all age groups. So as we're going through the design of this park, we did reference our Parks Master Plan, and parks in our park system are broken down by park standards and within that classifications. And so where this park fits is kind of in between a pocket park and a neighborhood park. And the reason why it's a little bit different than your typical park is because the majority of it is a basin space. So because it has a detention basin space, it's limited in the space that it can be constructed. So we can't put a playground in the middle of the basin, right? It kind of has to be an open space there for a bulk of the area there at the Shaughnessy Village future park. So both neighborhood parks and pocket parks have similar amenities in them. They typically include playgrounds, picnic tables, barbecues, benches, shade, things like that. Neighborhood parks are typically a little larger, usually between one acre and 10 acres, and they have a larger service area. And I'll show you some service areas in the next slide here. But the important thing is, is that we want parks that have, you know, walking distance. We want, pocket parks usually have a quarter-mile walking distance, and neighborhood parks usually have a half-mile radius as far as service. And so when we look at that, what that looks like on a map, and I know it's a little difficult to see here, you can see pocket parks and see those coverage of that quarter-mile radius around it. Again, you can see that with neighborhood parks. And when you look at this, you want parks that are walkable, right? You don't want to, you know, go a mile away to go to a park. In addition to that, you want to consider things like crossing highways, crossing busy roads, other barriers like that. So getting into this specific location here, again, it will be supported by Lighting and Landscape District Number Four, College Greens, and it'll be that island space off of Deans Way, Columbia, Haley, and Spatafore. Here's an aerial view of it. I'll show you some more pictures, but you can kind of see the indent of where the basin space is in that area to the left, which is to the west on site, is a flatter area that has the ability to have construction on it. So here's some site aerial photos. Again, you can see, right now, it's just dirt, and you can see that flat area. And in the distance, you can see where the basin is. Again, the basin space, that little indented space there. We did host a couple of public meetings for this particular item. We hosted one specific one at the community center on 10/6. We had about 30 members that public attend. A majority of them were from that subdivision area. And they had quite a few comments, of course. It was an exciting night for everybody. I think a lot of people have been waiting for that park for quite some time. Some items that had been both emailed in as well as stated at that public meeting were the inclusion of inclusive, all-inclusive playground structures, which what that means is something individuals of all abilities can use. So a lot of times playgrounds have limitations in terms of wheelchair access or, you know, different intellectual, you know, sensory-related amenities. So that was a big one that we got comments on, as well as the inclusion of fencing around the playground area. That's one that I pretty regularly get, is to include fencing around our playgrounds, and something we would like to do throughout the community. The inclusion of a shade structure in picnic areas, we've also seen that in other park locations. We've seen those, just about every Saturday at our picnic areas, they're packed with families. The inclusion of lighting trees, a perimeter pathway, drinking fountain benches was also something that was very commonly commented on. So we have three black and white conceptual maps, and then one colorized version, which will be the colorized version of this concept A. And so this is the concept that we as staff are recommending, and some of the reasons that go into, a lot of these concepts are very similar to each other because at the end of the day, it is a pocket park, it is a neighborhood park that's going to have some of your standard amenities, things like picnic tables, things like playgrounds. There's just not the space for, you know, sports fields and things like that. So, you know, this was the conceptual design that we are recommending. It does include four-foot high fencing and gates around the playground area, a 20 by 20 shade structure, which will provide coverage for four picnic tables as well as two on the outside edges. Concrete pathways will provide access around the perimeter of the park throughout the playground area. Over 80 trees will provide additional shade and greenery throughout the park, and decorative boulder areas will enhance the corner entry points to the park. A detention basin will include turf play areas similar to other parks in Los Banos. We have some other, we have about nine other basin parks in town. And the inclusion of sensory playground equipment will be dependent on the available budget. But we did include a little area that is like a music area where they can play with music, kind of noise makers that are intended for children of all abilities and will be adjacent to the playground area. So this is concept A. You can see it's kind of got a circular motion there. When I show the colorized version, it will be a little clearer, and you can see to the right there, the basin space. Concept B has a very similar setup, more of a half circle there above the basin, similar with the playground in between a turf area and a playground space area, and then a pathway coming down the middle heading east-west. The next location is more of an oval shape that puts the playground in the center with the picnic area overlooking the basin space, and again, some pathways leading there. And when we look at the colorized version of concept A, you can see those corners on the east side of the basin where it's a little bit more decorative. You can see, again, the playground inside of that circle area. Some considerations that we had with this particular design was the consideration of limiting turf areas to align with current and future drought tolerant policies. We also considered the amenities distance from roadways, creating a safe play zone. We did include fencing, but we do want to consider that families will be using this in an active way. And aesthetically pleasing symmetry, as well as the inclusion of playground and shade areas. And that, so as you can see, we're able to incorporate those in this design. So as far as the next steps, of course, it starts with tonight to have comments from our city council, and we'll be seeking eventual conceptual design approval. At that point, we would be moving into the design phase. We'll be completing specifications, cost estimate, engineering, and eventually go out to bid for construction and construction with a grand opening event once it's constructed. So I'm available for comments and look forward to your input.
All right. Councilmember Lambert?
Hey, Joe, I appreciate it. The one thing I want to make sure that we on some of these designs is, and you know, I think I've spoke to you on a couple of them, is the infant seats for the swings. A lot of these parks, I think, a lot of the parks don't have the infant seats. And I've been approached several times about, and I still want to look into possibly putting the infant seats in some of the other parks also. But we want to make sure we get the infant seats on some of the swings.
Understood. So just to kind of touch on that real quick, the reason why it can be challenging to put infant seats in is because per state law, you have to have, each section of swings is called a bay. You'd either have to have a double bay, because they want to separate infant from all ages. So you either have to have a double bay, you have to have two separate bays. I'm trying to look real quick. I think we might have included, we did include a separate swing set, so we can look to see if we can fit a double bay in there.
That's all I heard.
Thank you.
All right. Just a quick question. Is there any consideration when going into these parks? I know one of the challenges is we have, like, summer's coming. We have so many kids that are going to be playing organized baseball, softball, whatever it is. The consideration of possible, like, portable backstops or bringing in something for larger areas like a basin so that, you know, kids could practice baseball and not have a struggle to find a place to practice. Is that...
Yeah, absolutely. And it's something that I have heard as well. I think the biggest thing would be to work with our public works team to ensure that's done safely. One of the concerns with putting anything in a basin is it's got a utility purpose, of course. So, you know, I think something like a backstop is a simple enough structure that that's possible. I just want to work with them to ensure that that is done in a way that we're protecting our investment as well as it's done safely. So that's a bit I can work with them on. I don't know if this particular site might be the best location for that because it'll be quite expensive to wrap the whole park with fencing, and I think balls might, this park being an island or surrounding road, but other locations, certainly, I think there's lots of large basins that we have in the community.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, it looks like, with the community outreach, it looks like they liked concept A the most.
So we didn't have, we based these concepts off of those comments. But as far as what we tried to do, we did try to incorporate those comments as much as we could.
All right. So if we give direction tonight, how soon do you think this can be ready and open to the public? Because we do got to grow some grass, right?
Yes. So I think we're looking at at least, gosh, it'd be a few months before engineering was done. I would guess construction wouldn't be until probably next winter with, say, you know, hopefully, construction could be completed and the grow period would be completed before this time next year. But, you know, it really depends on that engineering process that can take, depending on any issues they may run into. It may take longer or shorter. I would anticipate that would be a realistic timeline.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then lastly, as far as direction from the city council on how to proceed, what do you need from us?
So I'm looking for, yeah, any comments. I can either bring this item back, or you can give me direction to move forward into the design phase. The primary reason I wanted to present tonight was to bring this project to you guys' attention and get that input from you. Again, we've had those two community meetings. I've received quite a few comments from the public and looking to get into construction.
All right, yeah. Again, I'll lean toward my councilmembers, but I'm ready to move forward. People want a place to go, and I don't think there's a reason to bring it back. I mean, it looks like you've done your homework.
With conceptual A or...
Yeah, which one was?
Our recommendation was concept A. Again, I can kind of go through them. Again, this is C, oval shape, half circle, and the circle would be A. Again, they're very similar in terms of amenities that are included.
Okay. All right. Anything else from council? Give direction to move forward on concept A for design? All right. Let's do it.
All right. Awesome. I hope you're all invited to the grand opening, hopefully.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 11, consideration of Josh Panero settlement and employment agreement. For this, we'll go to City Attorney Vaughn.
The first resolution, I'm sorry, thank you. The first resolution is a resolution accepting and approving settlement agreement and release between the City of Los Banos and Josh Panero. And then the second resolution is a resolution of the city council appointing a city manager, approving and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement between the city and Josh Panero. Just a little bit of background, on June 15 of 2022, Mr. Panero's previous employment as city manager was terminated by a vote of three to two by the previously constituted city council. On October 3, 2022, Mr. Panero, through his attorney, made a demand directed to the City of Los Banos alleging, among other things, potential cause of actions for damages, for retaliation under the Labor Code, retaliation under the Fair Employment and Housing Act, and wrongful termination. As a result of that demand, the city council discussed this matter in closed session and gave council direction in terms of discussions with Mr. Panero in an attempt to resolve, Mr. Panero and his attorney, in attempts to resolve any conflicts that the party might have regarding these issues and to avoid any protracted litigation. These documents that are before you tonight were negotiated and prepared at the direction of city council based on discussions in closed session, and that's how these documents were developed. So I'll go through the two documents briefly. If approved, the major terms of the settlement agreement are that in consideration for $1,800,000, Mr. Panero and Mr. Panero's agreement to return back to employment as the Los Banos city manager, he would agree to release and discharge the city and the city employees, city council, for and against any claims that he might have arising out of his prior employment with the city. That is essentially that eight-page settlement agreement before you tonight. It's got a lot of words in it. It is a fairly standard settlement agreement in terms of the releases and the promises made by two parties that are engaged in potential litigation. But those are the two major components. But those are the two major components of that settlement agreement is the consideration paid by the City of Los Banos and the general release given by Mr. Panero in exchange for that. In addition, as part of that settlement agreement, it was negotiated that Mr. Panero would return back to Los Banos, employed as city manager, and a separate employment agreement hasn't been negotiated that goes hand in hand with the settlement agreement. If approved tonight, the major terms of that agreement are that Mr. Panero would be hired for a four-year term of employment beginning February 21 of 2023. He would be paid at a base salary of $216,323 annually with annual 4% step increases. And then plus the various benefits that are set forth in that agreement. One of the significant terms of that agreement is the requirement of a five-zero vote or approval unanimous by the city council in order to terminate his employment during the term of the agreement, which is four years. And if that was done, he would be entitled to 12 months severance. If it was terminated within the last year of his employment, then that severance would be decreased by the number of months that were left in the employment term. And so those are the documents before you tonight for your consideration. I can answer any questions that you would like.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to members of council for discussion. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vaughn, there in the public in public forum, there was a resident who asked about why why we are paying Mr. Panero out of the general fund? Was there some other means to be able to pay him? And why wasn't that means used? So are you able to answer that question?
Two are the insurer and the insurer has declined coverage. And we'll be, if this matter goes forward tonight, we'll be looking at taking a look at their denial of coverage, see if, in fact, there is coverage. But as of right now, there is no coverage. And the that's the position the insurer is taking. And that there will, this this settlement for now would be paid out of unallocated general fund monies.
Thank you for answering that. You know, I I I have some concerns about the amount of money that's being paid out on this. And I read an article online from the Sun Star today where one of our council members had indicated that he had asked for a lot more than that. But this is what was brought back to the council to make a decision on. Now, I know, you know, we have a lot of things in the City of Los Banos that need tending to. We had made a commitment to our community to try to upgrade Pacheco Park. It's not in the landscape lighting district. We needed to try to find funds either by grant to get it done. We were unsuccessful because the state, you know, didn't give us any grant money. And I have no idea today what it would cost to do that. But we did commit to our community, to our children, to try to bring some sort of water feature to keep them cool in the summer because we don't have a swimming pool in our City of Los Banos. And this $1.8 million could have been well used to help support that project to upgrade Pacheco Park so it be available to community members and to the children in our community. I I've had, you know, people come to me and tell me about different things in the community, why people don't like me anymore because of the decision I made. But I have to do what I think is consciously appropriate for the the district that I represent. And so I I cannot support either item A or B on this agenda. I think we really need to legally look at setting up a kingship of five-o vote. And it's not just about me. If any of the other council members become disgruntled with an action that a city manager, not naming Mr. Panero, but a city manager makes. But, you know, it this is on this contract. So I guess I should say, Mr. Panero. If there's something that he does that they don't like, it won't matter. It won't matter. He's got his job, they're giving it to him without question. And a five-o vote means that I'm going to do it my way. I can do it my way. So I I think that's the wrong position to take in a city. It takes away the democracy of a city, the the democratic process. Even our legislators in Sacramento with the federal government, if our Congress sets forth something in a vote to send to the president and he vetoes it, they they don't require 100% vote to to make it law. There's a certain percentage that makes it law. So this, to me, is unjust for our residents. And it's unjust for the the council. And in the in the long term, I I think it sends the wrong message to our community. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before I start on my my little thing, I just want to let everyone know that Councilmember Lewis, before Josh was terminated, Councilmember Lewis's district got more done in her district than any of our other districts. Just want to make that clear. So before June 15th, before he was terminated, that night, our mayor was sick with COVID. And I want everybody to know, I passed, we passed a $48 million infrastructure budget that night for the City of Los Banos. Now, I'd like to see if anybody else back there would go back 10, 15 years. Did we ever have a budget at that amount? I don't think so. Budgets, Mr. Panero did work with the department heads to come up with this budget. It's not just done just by the department heads. The the city manager has a say in with the budget. And that night, he was terminated. Okay, unjustly terminated. Democracy did not work that night. We had, we I listened to some of the comments, the animal shelter. The budget, a $1 million budget was put out that night for the animal shelter. What have we done with that animal shelter at this time? Nothing. I believe there's only two things that's that's actually that was on that budget that I can recollect right now that we've actually started on. And I believe that's the ag complex. And I believe that's the scoreboards for the for the Little League. Not much else. We've been stagnant. I'm going to try to be as transparent as I can be. When I came here to Los Banos, it was in 2006. From 2006 all the way up until now, I have not seen any growth except for homes in this city, which is fine. Homes are great. You got to have people, you got to have population to bring the industry here. So I ran for office, I ran for my district. And I ran for the best thing I can do for the City of Los Banos. I've watched to see, you know, when I was when I was elected here. Nothing was getting, I I didn't see any, not a lot of things going on. So we went the way to hire for Josh and we went towards hiring a business person. We didn't want to go a government style. We wanted someone that would get, we don't need someone that's going to sit in the office and just sign a piece of paper. We wanted someone that was going to get out and do the job. And that's what we had. And again, it was unjustly terminated on that June 15th. And since then, we have not done anything in this city. It is, right now, I feel that the city, we're failing right now. And if we don't get the city back on track as fast as we can, we're just going to keep going downhill. So I I'm going to leave it at that. I may come back around. Possibly, but I'm going to hold up on that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
So, yeah, absolutely. Since it's out there and people wrote in, I have known Josh my whole life. And the things that I hear said about him doesn't describe who he is at all. It's actually pretty sad to hear those things coming from, I don't even know who. Because that's not him at all. And to hear that he's going around taking credit for everything, I I just know that's not true. I never met Joe Heim before, you know, I started working here. And I knew all about Joe Heim and how great he was because Josh was telling me that. All the amazing things he was doing for the city, as well as many other people. But I just bring up Joe because we brought up the college greens sign. And, yeah, I am a teacher. And the lesson I would have for my students is that sometimes you're going to make some tough decisions and people will come and stand in front of you and tell you how crazy and wrong you are. Sometimes they'll do it from the anonymity of a keyboard and try to attack your character and your morals and your ethics. And I just say to any of my students that you stand up for what you believe in. You stand up for who you are and you continue to sprint down the path that you know is right. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, mine's fairly short. When you look at the, you know, full picture, we should have never been put in this situation. The city should never be in this situation in the first place. Having to correct one of the biggest mistakes, a small majority of just three reckless city officials made in a colluded closed session meeting. This wrongful termination was unnecessary and completely avoidable. On a positive note, I'm happy that we're able to put this behind us. And I look forward to the progress. I look forward to the progress we're going to continue to make with our city manager back. So I'm happy to move this city forward.
All right. All right, so I guess I'll go last. One of the things historically that I've seen happen with it with within this city council itself is decisions that are made, larger decisions that affect people on an everyday basis and everybody's lives and money spent. It's not usually done in this room. And I wanted to make sure that tonight it was. These types of decisions don't need to happen at a round table. They need to happen in front of the public. And and we do need people to stand at this podium. One of the things that jumped out at me is when Josh was terminated, I I was I was here at that council meeting to the next meeting to people that were coming in his defense and the amount of people that were coming in his defense. And I think that's something that maybe was missing is that we don't work for ourselves, we work for you. So when 100 of you come up to that podium and complain and there's an issue, we we need to listen. So where I based my decision is, first of all, I looked at it again from the 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 headhunter, right, who we hired to actually get us applicants. And there were 10 applicants. And again, I know that there's HR rules and I can't go into detail of each of the applicants. But I will tell you, none of them were local, none of them. None of them had kids that went to school in Los Banos. None of them lived here, I can tell you that. And so that weighed heavily with me that we paid a consulting firm to find us a new leader. And we didn't know if that person shared our values or, you know, shared our culture or our community. So that that weighed heavily with me. The other thing was that I reviewed the investigation in its entirety. I read every single word, I watched every single interview. And and, you know, I I do have an experience as an investigator. And so for me, this was something that I wanted to take a look at from anyone's point of view. And my ultimate conclusion is that Josh was absolutely unjustly terminated. He didn't violate a single city policy, for that being said. This was basically, you know, we we may have always done it a certain way. And I don't like the way that this news person wants to do it. Well, to me, that's kind of stopping progress from actually happening. And that and that's how I viewed it. I also noticed that some of the complaints that were founded or that were were filed against Josh themselves, some of the people actually didn't even want to participate in the investigation, which that kind of holds weight, right? If if someone here were to come to this podium and voice their opinion, it's our job to listen, right? So if if people are that passionate where they're going to send in a letter, I would hope that they put their name on it. I'd hope they stand behind behind their voice because that's what I want to I want to hear from from the community. The other thing that was overwhelming was, like Councilmember Lambert said, the budget. The budget that was passed, a record-breaking budget of things that involved amenities for our community, things that our kids can actually benefit from, was passed by a person who was terminated in the same meeting. That made absolutely no sense to me. You know, we look at people that are going to go to work tomorrow morning. Could care less what the five of us do up here, as long as there's some sort of effect on them in a positive manner, right? And that's that's what we want. So to have a budget passed like that, that we're not doing what we what we allocated money to do is is to me a huge disappointment. And so that also shows me that, you know, there was not a succession plan. In fact, per the city bylaws, when they terminated Josh, we ran 26 days without a leader of our city, which violates our own city rules, which was something I also took into consideration that the previous council I wish would have as well. Also, I looked at what, again, what projects were completed, what wasn't completed. I hear constant complaints about the animal shelter. There's over $1 million that's been allocated for the animal shelter. Why are not, why are we not doing something with the animal shelter? Our job as council is to work on it. It's staff's job to to work in it, right, to make things happen. And and that's what we're not doing without a leader, with without a city manager. Again, the amount of money, and I know that people have talked about the amount of money, is, in in my opinion, looking at this, I did a cost benefit analysis, is time was far more valuable than money. You know, $1.8 million in a settlement, yes, that's a lot of money. But the amount of things that we're missing, we're about to move into budget season. So we need to create a new budget and we need to spend that money on our community, on what our citizens want. And so to spend $1.8 million to get $50 million worth of things done, I'll do it every single day of the week. And especially knowing that I can do it for the next four years. That's a $1.8 million and a $200 million investment. And so for me, that was an easy decision as far as doing that. Could maybe we have negotiated a lot longer and saved, you know, spent more money giving it to attorneys and, you know, rather than getting stuff done. I think our citizens want things done. And so that's how I focus that. All city employees received a 10% raise. The salary schedule that Mr. Panero is asking for comes in is actually less than what he would have gotten had he stayed. Had he stayed on at city manager, he would not, he would actually been receiving more money than him coming back in that salary schedule. And then lastly, I I've heard this in some of the comments that, you know, we could spend that 1.8 million on a pool or something else. Well, let me ask you this, who's going to manage that project? Right? Cut me a check for a million dollars, I'm going to have to give it to a city manager to manage that project, right? And so I need to invest in a person. And by this council making a decision possibly tonight to say, hey, we're going to invest in Josh to run these things, yes, we we have a return on investment and and we're not taking that lightly. We know what this money being spent on means and we know what you what you want from it. And then lastly, I will say this, that we did, again, this decision took a long time. This is not something that that I came to my own decision overnight. There were multiple closed session meetings. There was discussions, you know, with city staff. We did ask our interim finance director, you know, what can we afford? How will this impact our city? So there were a lot of a lot of decisions and a lot of discussion made. So with that, I will get off my sub blocks now and leave it to anyone anyone else. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I I did want to make a last comment, and especially about the letters that were submitted this evening. We all just took a recently a sexual harassment class and retaliation. And employees who can feel like they might lose their job if they name themselves, I I understand their feelings about that. So I guess I I want to say is is that if these letters came from our employees, I give them credence for at least speaking out their concerns. But I also understand the fear that they may have of retaliation by putting their names on the letters. In some areas, like the Bay Area where I worked, that's a whole different story, you know, that'd be that's a whole different story, you know, there'd be strikes and all kinds of things going on against a, a manager or a, a top management who might try to intimidate the employees. But in a small town, it's different. So I, I just want to point that out, that I understand the fears of the employees who may have written these letters and I, I don't think that we should throw a rock at them for doing so. They didn't come out and say anything the first time, but I, I, I think they felt a little bit of courage to say something this time, whether their names are on the letters or not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and, and, you know, just, just with that as well, I interviewed over 96 people about Josh. Again, I've never worked with Josh a day in my life. I interviewed 96 people and, and actually most of, of which were city employees, some were department heads. And the letters that I hear read do not match anything that 96 people told me directly to my face. And I would want people, if, you know, they have issues or have challenges, we need to create a culture that people can come actually to leadership and say, hey, I have a problem. And, and if we're not creating that culture, then we're not doing our job. All right. Anyone have anything else? All right. So I'll do these individually. So let's do City Council Resolution Number 6612, Accepting and Approving a Settlement Agreement and Release Between the City of Lost Banish and Josh Panero. Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 6612 as read by title.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Mayor, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes four to one. Let's move on to City Council Resolution Number 6613, Appointing a City Manager and Authorizing the Execution of the Lost Banish City Manager Employment Agreement with Josh Panero. And anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lambert?
I'll make that motion to approve, to approve the Resolution Number 6613 as read by title.
Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes four to one. Moving on to Item 12. Shut off the microphone there. Moving on to Item 12, Consideration of Appointment of One Councilmember to Serve on the League of California Cities Central Valley Division Executive Committee and Wants Councilmember to Serve as an Alternate. Anyone have any interest in the League of Cities? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Those two positions are generally appointed, the, the mayor is appointed as the first person and the alternate is usually the mayor pro temp. So with that, I'd like to nominate the mayor to be the representative and the mayor pro temp as the alternate.
All right, thank you. Do you have any other nominations? Do we take a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll, we'll take a vote on, I would serve on the League of California Cities Central Valley Division Executive Committee and that Mayor Pro Temp Lambert would serve as the alternate. Do we take a motion?
I made.
Oh, she made the motion, okay. Okay, second, second by Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to Item 13, Appointment of Commissioners to the Following Commissions. 13A Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. These are three two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2024. Michael, Amabel, Letty, Guerrero, and Eldridge Johns. Can I get a, a motion to appoint? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint.
Can I get a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then 13B is our Tree Commission, one two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024, and we have a nominee, Tom Calgen. And someone make a motion? Motion by Lambert. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item 14, Advancement of Public Notices. We have one report for this. We'll go to interim city manager, Suzelle.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We have one item. It's a mobile food vendor to operate a, en route throughout the city of Lost Banis within the public right of way. This is for an ice cream truck. The operator is Karen Quintana, doing business as Mlem Ice Cream. The public hearing will be held Wednesday, February 22nd at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
All right. We, we can keep your microphone on if you want, because now we're gonna go to the city manager report.
All right, thank you again. So this is my last meeting as the interim city manager. So I wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to fill in this role for about a month and a half. A lot of things have happened in that month and a half, I will say, probably in the history of the city of Lost Banis. We had inclement weather, so we had an emergency. We were on standby to open our emergency operations center. And then we went into another emergency with a sewer main break at the Canal Trail, which was unprecedented in I think the history of the city of Lost Banis. So an interesting time, an interesting time to be in this position, in this role. But a very good opportunity to be here and with the team that we have, especially our department heads. It's, it, we work with some really good people that we were able to team together. Each and every department had chipped in and especially on weekends and on holidays, we were working and making sure that our community was safe and that business was being run as it should be. So I, I want to extend my appreciation definitely to the team and all of the employees for pitching in. And in the middle of that, I had a baby and, and the, the department heads and my staff, again, all pitched in and just made that process pretty smooth. So with that, I just heartfelt appreciation and also an update on the homeless encampment. As, as stated previously at previous meetings, the closure and cleanup will occur the week of the 20th. The 20th is a holiday. So the enclosure, the closure will occur on the 22nd. But it will be the week of the 20th and cleanup has already started to occur and so that will continue. But the full closure with the 72-hour posting will happen officially on the 22nd. And then the last item, I do want to report that today is the mayor's birthday. Happy birthday, Mary Yanez. And that's it. Thank you.
I, I tried to get away with it. I really did. But thank you. All right, moving on to Item 16, Report Update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. And Councilmember Lewis, do you want to go first with San Joaquin Valley? Okay. All right. So with no report on San Joaquin Valley, yeah, so last week I actually attended the Merced County Association of Governments orientation. It was very informative, the things that I'm learning, stepping into this new, new role here. Also with MCAG, there are some, some certain things that are coming up. And so we're looking at obviously Measure V funding, the bus programs like that. There's some, some things that are coming down the pipe. Our next meeting is tomorrow. And so I'm looking forward to that. I also have a thing for Public Works to, to present to them, hopefully at an upcoming meeting. But it is a stamp that reads funded by Measure V. So you guys can see exactly what your taxpaying dollars are. So hopefully we won't mess up that stuff, you know, right off the bat. We'll kind of let it, you know, soak in the concrete. And again, just, just some of the items, I'm a voice for you at MCAG meetings. So as a county, I am your jurisdiction's representative. So please reach out to me with anything that I can bring forward to the county. And then also, one of the things that isn't kind of, not as many Lost Banis residents may know about or take advantage of is the Yards Program, which is free bus services to Yosemite National Park that occur through MCAG. And so I'll be sharing some of that information with people as well. So take a, take a trip to Yosemite. And with that, we'll move on to Item 17, City Council Member Reports. Start with Councilmember Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight to the meeting. The department heads, great presentation. Mr. Coon, city treasurer, Lucy, good to see you instead of finance director. But I appreciate it, everyone. Thank you, guys. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the first, second, and third of February, I had the opportunity to go to the League of Cities Conference down in Southern California in Burbank with the mayor as well. I had the privilege of meeting many local government council members, city managers, mayors, city attorneys. I took in so much information, just about, you know, everything this job entitles. And I obviously didn't learn everything in those three days and I, and I will be digging into those things more. One thing that they stressed to all of us is that as council members, we will get into disagreements with each other, with the city manager. But we're all a team. And, you know, we, we're not just gonna use our power as council members to get rid of someone because they are not doing what we want to do. And that was it.
Yes, okay. Yesterday morning, I had the pleasure of attending the Four Chaplains Breakfast over at the Veterans Hall. It was nice to learn about the heroic chaplains that, who died in World War II rescuing civilian and military personnel. I'd like to thank the VFW and American Legion for inviting me to attend. Also, February 25th, the Lost Banis Fire Department is having their pancake fundraiser breakfast over there at Fire Station 1. Tickets can be purchased in advance at the fire station located at 333 Seventh Street. And that is all.
All right, Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. And I, and I know Stacy, you said that you're, this is your last meeting. But do you know whether or not the council and our community in an open forum situation will be told a little bit more about the sewage problem we have and, and where we're going forward as far as correcting the process?
Yes, there will be information forthcoming. Yes.
Okay, on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, I'd like to make a recommendation that this council, perhaps at our next meeting, have something on the agenda to terminate the contract with the recruiting company that we hired. We've just kind of left them hanging out there with no information and I think we need to be forthright to them. That's it. Thank you.
All righty. All right, I'll go last. I'm gonna kind of go out of order. So I too was at the, the VFW Four Chaplains meeting and event and that was, that was absolutely outstanding to, thank you for inviting me to that, to participate in that. I met today with the Habitat for Humanity, Merced and Stanislaus Counties Organization as they're beginning a merger joint venture. And so I'm looking forward to getting more information about that amazing organization, how we can help bring it into the Lost Banis to serve our residents. I did go with, with Councilmember Begonia down to the League of Cities training. So again, thank you for sending me to that. I learned quite a bit about the word government code and, you know, things like that. Do's and don'ts, if you will. And so there's a lot of information to process. But again, you know, the, I think the big takeaway for me is that we have to be on the same team and have the same goal. We don't have to agree every single time and, and that's what, you know, policies are for. But we have to have at least the same light at the end of the tunnel. And if we're not sharing the same light, then we're in trouble. And so that's, that's really got to be the, the focus. I want to thank Stacy for her time as our interim city manager. Absolutely amazing. We, we appointed the right person. To say that she's become a short-term professional in putting out fires is an understatement. She's, she's been fantastic. So thank you, Stacy. I, I concluded my initial assessment. It's just, again, I've only been here a few months, but I've been working on an initial city assessment. I shared a little bit of that today with our interim finance director. We had a great meeting. And so talking about kind of what the vision of, of things moving forward are and, and talking about things like the, the homeless crisis and, and animal shelter. So so I'm pretty much done kind of just gathering data and now it's, it's putting a plan together and, and are, asking our new city manager to, to, to work with the council and, and get some of those things done. And then I did say I was gonna donate my monthly salary and I was kind of hoping there'd be like a line at the podium for people wanting my money, but that hasn't really happened yet. So you know, and, and Roy's moving back there, but he should because I've selected the Chamber of Commerce because the chamber has come to the meetings and, and so I will be donating my January salary to the chamber. And, and so I hope good stuff comes from that. So that, that concludes my report. So with that being said, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilmember Jones?
I'm moved.
Can I get a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned at 8:20.